Good evening. My name is Kristin Walters. On behalf of the Olbridge PTA President's Council, I will be conducting tonight's interviews. There are nine members on the Board of Education with three-year terms. Each year, three members end their term. This year, we have five candidates running for the three open seats. The incumbents are Matt Solakowski, Jill DeCaro, and Lisa Lent. Our first candidate is number one on the ballot, Matt Solakowski. How long have you lived in Olbridge? And do you currently have or had children in the Olbridge school system?
I've been involved, I lived in Olbridge for well over 20 years, but I've been involved with the Olbridge school system for over 50. I was a school teacher here for close to 40 years. I have currently two grandchildren in the school system. One is in grade nine and the other one is in grade 10.
Why are you running for the Board of Education?
Because I enjoy it. And this is my fifth run. And with the knowledge and the experience I have being a school teacher for so many years, I feel that I'm an asset to the system, okay? And the rest of the board members.
What has been your personal involvement with education in the Olbridge community?
Okay, with education. Well, first of all, as a school teacher, I used to run a summer work program. And we ran that for about 10 or 15 years. What we would do is work youngsters that are at risk, you know, family problems, whatever. We would hire about 15 or 20 of them. And I would work with the maintenance department. Whatever had to be done, sanding doors, painting. And I brought the program back. I worked it out with the curriculum people. And we brought the program back. But through what happened with the virus, we'll probably start it next year. Okay? It's already in the budget. But this time, I won't be teaching it. Somebody else is gonna have to do it.
Have you attended any Board of Education meetings during the past year? If so, how many?
I missed, I believe, only one meeting. So I've been at a lot of agenda meetings, curriculum meetings, board meetings. Probably a 30 to 48 year, but this is a lot of committee meetings that we attend to, okay?
What qualities do you possess that make you think you are a strong candidate for the Board of Education?
Again, the years of experience being a board member. This is my, it'll be my 15th year. Plus, the experience I have as a school teacher. I know the inner workings of the system outworks.
What one aspect of the Olbridge school system are you most proud of?
We've moved a long way. At one time, we were down in the lower half. We're in the upper half now. Our school system, the education system, completely, we're doing a lot better. The kids are doing better. And I probably would give the credit to the school teachers because they're doing a phenomenal job.
What do you think the role of a member of the Board of Education is?
Is to create policy. And that's basically it. And the school system will run on the policy that we create now, okay? Because we represent the community.
What do you have experience or specific qualifications that you will bring to the table as a Board of Education member?
I'm a good listener. And when somebody asks me for my advice, I will give my advice. But I'm a very good listener and I want to see what everybody has to say. And just, but we have to work as a team, work together. Because we're, I'm not here alone, neither is the other board members, okay? When we come up with something, we have to work it out. Not only work it out, but we all have to agree with it. That's the way it works.
What are your thoughts on our current level of remote learning? And what impact do you feel it has had on the special education during the COVID-19 closure?
Okay, here's, I have two grandkids. My granddaughter is doing very little with the online. I'm being honest with you. For the special needs kids, the special ed and the elementary kids, what we have to do, we're planning to open up next Monday, which is the 12th. Little by little, start bringing them in. My, I would like to see all the elementary kids, especially kindergarten, first grade, second, and third grade. They're youngsters. They don't know what's basically going on. And the special ed kids, to bring them in first and start at that level. And then little by little, bring in the rest of the kids, okay? The most important is the special ed and the elementary, in my opinion.
Do you think students and staff should wear masks in school?
Yes. Yes.
How do you feel our district has handled the pandemic and remote learning since our school closure in March 2020? What do you feel the district could have done differently?
Well, really, you know, we have such a large district, nine and a half thousand kids or so. It's very difficult to move too quickly, okay? What we have to do is work out, in fact, I would like a tour of the buildings. I'm gonna ask Dr. Setardino, Mr. Setardino to, I wanna see how far the kids are gonna be apart. Are the desks gonna be closed? Are we, are they gonna be enclosed in a plastic screen? I don't know. See, this is something that I don't know. I think the other board members don't know either yet. But when we open up next Monday, again, it's gonna be just a handful of kids coming in, okay? And I think we're handling it very, very well with a school system dislodge.
Thank you. And ballot position number two is Jill DeCaro.
Hi.
Hi. How are you? Good. How long have you lived in Olbridge? And do you currently have or had children in the Olbridge school system?
Um, so I have lived in Olbridge for 22 years. Moved in when my youngest was one. And I had three children that went through the system. They're done. They're out. Uh, they went to Charah. My oldest went to Salk. My two younger ones went to Sandberg due to redistricting. And then all three of them graduated Olbridge High School.
Why are you running for Board of Education?
Well, um, this would be my second term. And you know what? I just believe that there's still more work to do. Um, we have gone through some unprecedented times, you know? And, um, you know, right now, we're in a very reactive phase. And, um, you know, I'd really like to get through these uncharted waters, get to the other side and start getting back to the business of actually focusing on student achievement programs and back to where we were before this pandemic.
What has been your personal involvement with education in the Olbridge community?
Well, so, like I said, we moved in when my youngest was one and my oldest was just going into kindergarten. So, uh, since then, I believe kindergarten, when he was in kindergarten, I didn't really do much. I went to PTA meetings. But starting first grade is when I started taking board positions at Charah. You know, so, and I pretty much had, held a board position ever since my oldest was in first grade. Um, I've held, I was PTA president at Charah. I was PTA president at Sandberg. I was coordinator of President's Council, like you. And I was the president of the Olbridge High School PTSA. So, you know, that, and then I've also been, I was also a teacher, a parish school of religion teacher at St. Ambrose. I did that for about 10 years. And that's it.
Have you attended any Board of Education meetings during the past year? If so, how many?
Uh, I've pretty much attended them all. I was, in my three years, I can tell you I missed two meetings. One, I was in Paris. It was a regular meeting. And one agenda meeting was the day my mom had passed away. So those were the two meetings that I missed. Otherwise, I've been to all of them.
What qualities do you possess that make you think you are a strong candidate for the Board of Education?
Well, you know, the one thing that I am good at is that I'm very good at listening and I'm very good at hearing all sides of a situation. Speaking of my mom, the one thing my mom used to say to me is, you know, listen to everyone's opinions, but make your own decision. It's very important to not be myopic and not be focused on one particular way of thinking. You need to have a wide, diverse range of thoughts and information from all sides. And, you know, I just know the kind of person I am. I'm usually, I usually do that. I'm usually very good at hearing altering opinions, you know? Uh, you know, I might agree, you know, oh, you make a really good point, but then you make a really good point. And the key is to compromise and come up with something that most people are happy with. You know, and we also have to understand that not everybody is going to be happy. You just have to make the best decisions for the entire district. And, you know, I just feel like I have, I have that personality where I can listen to different, different opinions.
What is one aspect of the Olbridge school system you are most proud of?
Just one? You know, especially during this pandemic? And, you know, I mean, I could, I could list so many things. But right now, the one thing I am so proud of is the way our staff, our teachers, our, our support staff, our administration, all banded together with our parents to make this virtual learning situation work. I know our teachers have been working all hours. They're not, they're not just punching in, you know, their specific hours. Our teachers are going above and beyond what they need to do. Uh, our administration, I know, is working tirelessly. You know, eating, sleeping, breathing, you know, how to effectively educate our students. And our parents, our parents have been fantastic with, with, you know, just jumping on board and understanding and teaching, you know, our kids. And our kids, you know? They're, they're the ones that are, that are actually doing the learning, you know? They're at home. They're troopers. And, um, you know, that, that is what I'm currently most proud of, you know? Uh, but there's so many things, you know, about Olbridge that, that I'm proud of. That's just the latest.
What do you think the role of a member of the Board of Education is?
Well, um, Board of Education members are, they set, they're policymakers, you know? And we set policies and we, um, we oversee, okay? Um, we, we create district goals and we create board goals. And it is our job to oversee that those goals are being met by, by our administrators. Um, you know, we, we give directives and they have to meet those, those directives in whatever manner they choose to. Our job is to just oversee and make sure that what, uh, what is supposed to happen, happens.
Do you have any experience or specific qualifications that you will bring to the table as a Board of Education member?
Well, um, I have my past three years, you know? And prior to that, you know, just being so involved with the school system and knowing, you know, the inner workings of things. Not to say that I didn't learn a lot my first year as a board member. Um, there's always a lot to learn. You know, it's amazing how much you don't know. You know, even as involved as one is, it's amazed how much you don't know when you get on the board. But, um, you know, I think my biggest qualification is, um, you know, I'm a mom. I have kids, you know? Yes, my children are older. But, um, you know, I was very involved with them in the school system. I fought for my kids, you know? I fought for what I felt they needed. And so as a, as a board member now, um, you know, I, I appreciate parents that, that fight for their children, so.
What are your thoughts on the current level of remote learning? And what impact do you feel it has had on the special education during the COVID-19 closure?
Yeah, so, um, well, in the spring, we shut down very quickly. And, you know, it, we all, everyone scrambled to just do the best they can. Um, but, and now reopening in September, I, I'm very happy with the plan that they have, you know, that our administration came up with. Very structured, um, just like being in the classroom, but being at home. You know, they're, they have to check in. They have, you know, attendance is taken. And they're held accountable. And that was very important to us. Um, as far as the special education community goes, you know, they are, you know, those are our most vulnerable and they do need to be in the classroom. And that's, that's understood. And everybody wants to do what they can to get those particular students back in. Um, I know our plan right now is to have our self, our special education self-contained classroom, classes get back into the classroom, K through 12, back into the classroom on October 12 because it, it is very important. They are, um, uh, physical learners, you know? It's difficult for them to sit in front of a computer. And, you know, I completely understand that. I happened to be, uh, you know, on a Zoom call with my brother the other day. And he has a first grader who's in Gen Ed. But, um, I saw, you know, what he was dealing with, just, you know, having to leave and go, you know, help him, uh, you know, change program, you know, get onto whatever he was doing. And, um, you know, it was, it was very, very eye-opening. And, um, so no, they need to get back into the classroom. And we are doing everything we can to get them back. It's, it's important.
Do you think students and staff should wear masks in school?
Yes. Yes, I do. Absolutely.
How do you feel our district has handled the pandemic and remote learning since our schools closed in March 2020? What do you feel the district could have done differently?
I don't know. I, I, I think that we as a district handled it as well as we could. You know, the only, the thing that is always something that you can improve on is communication. Um, you know, it, it's difficult because, communication is difficult because there, it's such a fluid environment and things change so frequently. So it's almost, it's a little bit difficult to communicate to parents and even staff members, you know, what's happening because things change so rapidly. But I understand that there probably was a lot of frustration um, because of maybe a communication problem. But, you know, that being said, um, I believe that the administration and, you know, everybody did the best job that they could, given the circumstances.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Next is Frank Weber, who is fourth on the ballot. Good evening, Frank. How are you?
Good.
How long have you lived in Olbridge? And do you currently have or had children in the Olbridge school system?
Yes, I moved here in 1974. And next November 30th, this November 30th coming, I'll be here 46 years. I have four children who have attended and graduated from the district. And had a grandson who was here for, uh, in Cheesequake School for two or three years, but they've since moved to Vermont.
Why are you running for the Board of Ed?
Well, uh, I, I think that the Board of Education, of course, is in a difficult place because of the COVID-19, as is virtually everybody in the country. But I also think that we're in deep financial trouble based on the massive state cut that was done two years ago, which is, will, when it's finished being paid for it, roughly $2 million a year or a little more, uh, it will cost us that $15 million. Now, the important part of it is that we still have another $11 million to go. And in the time that that $11 million goes, unless something changes at, at Trenton, we are capped at only raising 2% a year, unless we have an extraordinary expense, which usually, even if you had it for that, it wouldn't help you on a general income. So, uh, part of that, I think, took place in going back. I last served on 2017 on the board, from 2008 to 2017 consecutively. When the funding formula changed in 2011, when the election got moved to November, it was capped at 2%. There was no voting on it unless, as I said, something extraordinary came up. Like there was a big increase in the health benefits or whatever the case may be. So right now, unless the law changes, we're capped at only raising 2%, which is not even enough to offset what we're losing in state aid. And then when you consider that whatever increases take place, which is typically 1.5 to 2%, we need somebody on the board who, I think, has a strong business background, which I do. And, uh, yeah, I'm, you know, I've got a facility for numbers. And we really have to find ways to be a more efficient financially system so we don't harm the education problem.
What has been your personal involvement with education in the Olbridge community?
Well, 18 years on the board has been my primary responsibility, of which 15 years of that even before I was on the board because when my children started entering the school system in 1979, I noticed there were, uh, there were different curriculums at the elementary schools. There were a lot of issues. And I got active as a parent in the Long Range Planning Committee. That committee was reconstituted in 1986 and I served on it for 15 years, although I was not on the board until 1993. One of the things that I'm most proud about that is that we, we had a PTA representative from every school and we also had an alternate. So we had meetings that were held at least once a month for that 15-year period. And the group went from a group of people trying to each protect their own cert, uh, their own turf, to when that became acclimated to the fact that what we were doing was for the district at large. For example, Cheesequake School, as you all know, is on the top of a hill and it's a nine-acre plot. Sounds like it's got equity, but almost six to seven acres of that is a steep slope. So I knew, we're not gonna put an addition on Cheesequake School. It's just not gonna happen. And that happened in several other schools as well. Once we got past that, the committee worked extremely well. I did all of the demographics for the, for the board. And of course, there were a number of members of the board then and people who challenged and wanted to get a professional one done. And my numbers were 98% accurate. So, uh, and even was cited in a 2001 state audit report that we had a unique system, which was remarkably accurate. Since then, obviously, I've been on various and some board committees. I've been president three years, vice president two years. When we had a, not Committee of the Whole for Finance, I chaired that a number of years. I chaired the negotiation committee a number of years. A lot of that are skill sets that I bring from the business environment. Now, they're not necessarily pure education, but the Olbridge School District, as we speak, is $175 million a year business. So I think they're, they're paramount to the district functioning well so that the education can be delivered by the professionals.
Have you attended any Board of Education meetings during the past year? If so, how many?
Well, all right. The past school year would go back to, the last time I physically attended a meeting was when the shutdown process was taking place at Cheesequake and I attended, I think for maybe two, three meetings, whatever it was at that time. Now, I noticed in your questionnaire, when you asked that question, you don't mention any regular meetings. You only mentioned agenda and committee meetings on your questionnaire. So, uh, the others I watch on TV, I watch on YouTube and, uh, which is great, especially in a COVID environment.
What qualities do you possess that make you think you are a strong candidate for the Board of Education?
I've got a strong business background, analytical by nature, which I think is sometimes necessary. You know, it had a lot to do with the, with the referendum, not just doing the demographics, but also, we basically delivered a ready-made plan to the architect. There really were no virtual changes made, so I'm, I'm proud of that accomplishment. Uh, I do my homework. I think if anybody knows me, I do my research, which I think is an important skill. And I, I am prepared to vote my mind on an issue. It may be different than the rest of the board. I may agree with them, but it won't be because I don't know, have the information available to make it. There are sites, for example, on the Department of Education. One of them is called NJ DOE Data, which gives you a 25-year history of everything that's going on in the state in every district. And it gives you a frame of reference to compare your district and similar districts like you. And again, this comes from my analytical side, to find out that we're not managing something that's independently and we're trying to do everything on our own without looking at what peer districts are doing.
What one aspect of the Olbridge school system are you most proud of?
Uh, well, obviously, I'm, I'm proud of the improvements that have taken place over the years academically. Uh, but I'm also personally proud of the referendum. And I'm also very proud of the change that I was initially responsible for in raising the question in how nursing services are delivered. In 1993, in my first year on the board at my very first meeting, and I should give a little background. My wife has been a nurse since she's 17 and an RN since she's about 19. And, um, RNs were not allowed to work in the schools at that time. All of the new, all of the nurses who were in the buildings were certified school nurses, which means in addition to their nursing credentials, which are really not any vastly different than the RNs thing from a medical standpoint, they were also certified as teachers. And ostensibly, that was to be able to teach health classes. But the reality is because of the nature of a nurse's office, children coming out of class, somebody sick, it, it's not a practical situation. And therefore, they, they transitioned that to health, to phys ed teachers to do the health class. When they did that, they remained, they, certified school nurses, remained on the teacher's guide, which is considerably higher than the RN's guide. We, uh, we passed that to our board attorney. He examined it. That was from the Willance Firm in Perth Amboy. Harold Smith was our attorney at the time. We bonded with about six or seven other districts of a similar nature and we filed a lawsuit. And the lawsuit prevailed. We were allowed to do it. Now, that was only extended to us and the people who were covered by the lawsuit. But I will note now, as time has gone on and the state cannot satisfy the need for all the certified school nurses that they wanted, we now have 22, or at least closely, 22 RNs and 11 certified school nurses. That's the same number we had in 1993. We never laid off a certified school nurse. As they retired out, we hired another certified school nurse. And usually, those were nurses who were in our system who opted to get the training, to get that, and that's remained the same. So we never took anything away from an existing certified school nurse. Cumulatively, since 1993 and now, we've saved millions of dollars. It's probably well in excess of eight and I wouldn't be surprised if it's close to $10 million.
What do you think the role of a member of the Board of Education is?
The role of a Board of Education member is to make policy and to see that the district is well managed. Now, having said that, the administration, it is the administration and the superintendent at the top of the administrative chain to see that the district is well numbered. But that one line in the Code of Ethics says at one time, if anybody has doubt about the other one, they're supposed to act on it. So, uh, that's how I feel.
Do you have any experience or specific qualifications that you will bring to the table as a Board of Education member?
Well, again, I've got, I've been involved in a process as a parent since 1983, as a board member since 1993 for 18 years. I've been proud of my record, my record of consistency of questioning things that I think can be improved upon. And I'm not subject to any influence by anybody in the administration because I have no conflicts. I've never had a conflict. Four of our current board members are restricted by state law. Not by me, not by my opinion, but by state law and their ability to discharge their role 100%. Now, what they can be excluded from varies from one to the other. But I have a, I have a page that goes to the state website, which I'll be posting for people to read that and understand it themselves.
What are your thoughts on the current level of remote learning? And what impact do you feel it has had on special education during the COVID-19 closure?
Well, I would hope that the special ed children get preference in class learning as much as possible. Just as I would say that I think, I'm not happy with the opening plan, reopening plan that we have at all. Uh, we have four hours of classroom time, which obviously hasn't started yet. It's gonna be rolled out over a three or four week period before we get to that point. Uh, the fact that we have three separate groups based on an enrollment of 24 in the elementary school, which is not what the enrollment was, it was 22. I think the, it was achievable to just go with an which is not what the enrollment was, it was twenty-two, I think the, uh, it was achievable to just go with an A B plan. And, uh, I know, you know, I've, I monitored the enrollment, even though I've been off the board since two thousand seventeen, the number is still dropping. So, uh, I, I believe some districts, for example, are putting more of their high school kids and middle skids on, uh, kids on a hundred percent so that they can get more kids in the elementary school who are less proficient on the computer. Because I think a child who's missed three or four months of their first grade in the last year, school year, and now goes into this one and God knows, it could be a full year, I think are going to be, have a devastating hill of learning coming out of that. So I don't think we've, we've done a superb job. Uh, I would refer everybody to the East Bundrick site and, uh, look it up and see what their reopening plan is like. They're virtually the same size as us, uh, you know, and a, a next door neighbor. So I think that's one of the, one of the plans that hopefully we can emulate or modify ours to.
Do you think students and staff should wear masks in school?
When it, when it's, uh, very practical, I, you know, and, and you talk about wearing masks, the NJ SIA, and don't misunderstand what I'm going to say, I'm pro-sports, I coached sports for years, I played sports in high school and I played sports in other leagues. But when teenagers and if you take, look at the junior or senior year in, in, with, in their age, in contact sports like basketball, football, even track, where people are very close to each other, they're running into each other and they're more likely to throw off fluids, they're allowed to do that. And at some point, when we go back to the high school environment, there, I would go back in the culture. They are, uh, clearly, I think medically, all the medical indications are, they are more likely to contract the disease than, or the, the COVID-nineteen than kids in a, of elementary school age are. That's not something within our control that came from the state, but I'm saying with those ironies. Right now, I wear a mask every time I have to, uh, you know, I'm in a more susceptible group. I don't have any underlying health issues, but I think it's prudent to wear. Getting a kindergarten child to wear it all day, that's going to be a problem, it's going to be difficult.
How do you feel our district has handled the pandemic and remote learning since our schools closed in two thou- in, in March of two thousand twenty, uh, twenty twenty? What do you feel the district could have done differently?
Well, again, not, not having been there, uh, as a parent and, but the things that I followed on the, uh, you know, on the Facebook pages and the, uh, other media, uh, an awful lot of the people who have kids that are in the, um, remote learning, especially at the elementary and the younger part of the elementary classes, do not seem happy. Um, I haven't sat through it, working, trying to work with the homework with anybody, my grandchildren live out of state and, uh, no great grandchildren yet, so, uh, I, I can't answer that, but I do know the community at large. I've never seen the amount of discontent that I have with this kind of program. Uh, for the kids who are above the fourth or fifth grade and are pretty computer savvy and all the way up through the high school, I think it's far less of an issue.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay.
Our last candidate who was spiffed on the ballot is Lisa Lynn.
Hi.
Hi. How long have you lived in Olbridge and do you currently have or had children in the Olbridge School District?
I've lived in Olbridge about nineteen years and my son did go through, um, the Olbridge School System. He graduated a few years back, um, and now is currently serving in the Marine Corps.
Why are you running for Board of Education?
I would like to be re-elected because I feel like three years just wasn't enough. Um, I spent a good portion of that just learning the ins and outs of it and just trying to, um, add some of my business ideas, some of my accounting ideas. And I think if I had the opportunity to be re-elected, I could continue on that and build on that. And I think with the budget cuts and everything else that's happening, it could be really beneficial to the community.
What has been your personal involvement with education in the Olbridge community?
I've been on the Board of Ed for three years now.
Have you attended any Board of Education meetings during the past year? If so, how many?
Um, I've attended basically all of them. Part of being on the board is you have to attend, so, um, how many? I would say ninety-seven percent.
What qualities do you possess that make you think you are a strong candidate for the Board of Education?
Um, as I just mentioned, I have twenty-four years of experience in business and accounting, I have a master's degree in both, where I think I could bring those, um, that background, that education to the board. Um, like I mentioned, with budget cuts, with different type of the virtual learning situation, I could just add a, a beneficial, you know, thought to the board that maybe they're not looking at as being parents or being grandparents of children still in the system.
What one aspect of the Olbridge school system are you most proud of?
Um, I think, I, I'm proud of the entire school system as a whole. I, I think that we have a great administration, I think the students are phenomenal and I think the parents are, are just incredible. We, we have so many good things happening in the school system, it's hard to just pinpoint one.
What do you think the role of a member of the Board of Education is?
My role, um, well, board member's roles is to really just add some of the background, some of their experience and try their best for the students, for the community, for the taxpayer. Um, that's all we're, we're all trying to do is just do our best to contribute and to make it an even great experience for everyone involved.
Do you have any experience or specific, uh, qualifications that you will bring to the table as a Board of Education member?
As I mentioned, my, my twenty-four years, um, I work for a more, a major Broadway theater, um, as a director of human resources there, I worked my way up through the entire accounting department. I, I bring a lot of business knowledge, a lot of accounting knowledge, which, like I mentioned, I feel like I'm just repeating myself and I apologize just with all the cuts and, and there's more to come. I, I think that I could just add, um, a good accounting, you know, education to it. I, I think some people don't understand, um, balance sheets and fiscal responsibility where I do and I think I could bring that to the table.
What are your thoughts on our current level of remote learning and what impact do you feel it, it has had on the special education during the COVID-nineteen closure?
I would like to see, um, obviously, if everyone is healthy and it's safe, I would like to see the children back in class. Especially the, um, special ed, um, the younger children, first grade, second grade. It's very difficult for elementary school-level children to, to learn virtually. You, you know, I mean, anyone that has had a child of that age knows, you could barely get them to sit for thirty minutes, let alone six hours, looking at a screen. And I think that those are the groups of children that are really lost with the virtual learning. So if we could figure out a comparable, um, decision to bring some back, to bring all back, to try to just expand on the virtual learning and just make it a hybrid where they're in school a certain amount of time and they have that one-on-one, it'll be beneficial to them. I, I, I think they're lacking right now and it's, you, you know, it's our responsibility to try to get them the education that they deserve.
Do you think students and staff should wear masks in school?
I think the CDC is advising that that is the healthiest thing to do and that we should follow CDC guidelines. You should wear masks, you should have the P P Es inside the classroom, take proper precautions. Um, if necessary, wear gloves, you know, um, disinfectant, um, clean the desks, clean everything. I think as long as it's safe and we're following CDC guidelines, then bring them back.
How do you feel our district has handled the pandemic and remote learning since our school closed in March twenty twenty? What do you feel the district could have done differently?
I think the district had the students in mind and the community in mind, but I think when we were early on, obviously, it's difficult to say what we should have done, what we shouldn't have done, it was thrown on all of us and we couldn't prep for it. Going into this school year, I think that we left a large portion of the community out. And I think that is the special needs programs, I think that is the younger children. And I don't fully think that the administration, um, came up with a plan that benefited them. And I think that we should, we need to concentrate on that and expand on that to help those, that particular group.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I hope you have found these interviews to be informative and please remember to vote on November third. Thank you and have a good night.